If you are. All right, I'm going to call to order a special meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. Today is Tuesday, January 16th at 5:30 PM. The first item on the agenda is present to speak. If there's anyone present to speak, you should be able to unmute yourself. I ask that you state your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone present to speak? All right, seeing none. Excuse me. The next item is general budget discussion. So Heather, did you forward that email to John and Liza? Okay, so you should have just recently received an update of the changes. Donna has added some since her first change based on our conversation last week. Troy and I met and worked through his budget and made some adjustments. And then I was able to get some new numbers on cellphone going forward, which isn't a lot of dollars, but it's it's dollars nonetheless. So I'm going to share my screen. One second. So you can see. Okay. Can you all see? The budget? Summary?
Yes, I can.
Okay, all right. So when we met last week, the first run that Donna presented us with was a 14.7% increase and that represented $518,311. So we knew that was significant. We weren't sure whether or not we would be able to do all of that in one year. We heard from our Public Works Director Troy how important he thought a lot of the additions he made to his budget were. I think he still feels like that. And while I support those, we recognize, especially in these uncertain times, we may not be able to support a $500,000 increase in one year. And a lot of that was, a lot of the increase in public works, which is this 327,000, was in personnel. So we asked Donna to provide us with two scenarios. I'll start with the second here. If we removed the two laborers, full-time laborers, their insurance benefits. I believe this still left in the additional hours for the Public Works Administrators. Is that correct, Donna? Okay. And then an additional change you'll see here is we had a one in Town Hall Operations Maintenance and Miscellaneous. We had a project from this year. We do not need those dollars represented next year. So we removed that $9,000, but added in 6,100, which would represent a potential purchase of communication software based on data from the Communications Task Force as a placeholder. So that would bring our budget to a $361,000 increase and a 10% or 10%. All right, that did not change. Scenario two was to leave one full-time laborer into our budget, remove the additional hours for the Public Works Administrative Assistant and all of the benefits that went along with those positions. That also meant if we had an additional staff member, we would not have the need for a contractor to remove snow. So that's the 23,000 you're seeing removed here. Here's the camera project and the communication software change, taking out that 9,000 and adding in 6,100. And this was the high end of the two software options that were presented to the Communications Task Force. The
Erica, sorry to interrupt.
Yes, Donna.
I just noticed the contractor is removed twice. So so if you want to type one of those back in, yeah, on line 21.
If I just take this out?
On column C, just put zero. And that should zero it out. And then the formula, yep, now you're at 7.3%.
I like 6.6, but this is more real. Thank you for catching that, Donna. Okay, so after Troy and I met, we sat down and went line by line through his budget and he found some places where he would go back either a little bit or back to the original budget. And we can talk about each one of them. The biggest was in the chip seal areas. So in line 22, line 23, and line 24, those make up the most significant dollar difference. And the reason being is we talked about what Troy's plan was for chip seal program and for road maintenance specifically this year. And one of the roads that was on the plan to be done could and most likely would be impacted by the Loves Project beginning. So what we talked about was, did we want to go in and do work and paving on a road that then would be impacted by construction of a new truck stop and potential damage to that road? Right? Nothing would be more frustrating than to fix the road, correct some issues, and then have to go back in again. So with that, these dollars represented the cost of what it would be to work on that road in this fiscal year. Troy, is that accurately? Reflect what we discussed?
Yeah. Basically, everything's staying the same, basically.
Right. So we went back. So we'll still be able to chip seal the other roads, but there was an additional road that we would have done paving on. So we took that out for this year. And then decreased the miscellaneous supplies item, took 5,000 out of the vehicle maintenance, 6,000 out of the road maintenance, $1,000 out of parts and supplies, 5,000 out of the asphalt. This will still be an increase, but 5,000 less, $3,000 out of the crack seal and 10,000 from the equipment purchase. And again, Liza, to your point, I think we asked Troy, you know, what he needed to work with. And I think he would still agree that this is the most, the original dollars are the most adequate to be spent to help get us back to better working shape specifically for some of our roads. But recognize that if we have to make some cuts somewhere, we will. He took $1,000 out of the transportation general supplies. We're still working on any and all contracts we have to see if we can find some savings on those. And we will continue to work on that. One of them was, I've been meeting with different vendors to discuss options for our cell phones. And so far, the best price I've gotten now with the addition of the first Selectmen's phone being covered by the town, we would spend less for two than we did for three. And the reason being is we pay now for unlimited text and data, but we only pay for a certain number of minutes on the two cell phones the town does pay for. So when they go over that number of minutes, we pay per minute. And so instead of one flat cost, it fluctuates. So I now reduced the animal control phone from 700 to 500, the budget for Public Works phone from 950 to 500, and the first Selectmen budget request from 950 to 500. So that brings our grand total to $257,007 increase over the current fiscal year or a 7% increase. Now, if we go back and we try not to touch Donna's spreadsheet here, you can see of that $257,000, 150 of it is an increase in capital expenditures out of the CIP plan. So those dollars are reflected in our budget, but they do not come from our typical departments here. They are in capital expenditures and that committee meets again tomorrow and I hope we'll finalize year one to be presented to the board. And then we would vote on that and move that forward to the Board of Finance. And so 250 of that $257,000 increase is in capital expenses. So any questions about the changes that we've made?
Just a little bit of technical issues. You cannot tell tonight because I have a completely new work setup. And it's not functioning. It's my first time zooming and it's not working super duper well. But I think I've got it all squared away. So can you repeat that last bit of what you just said about that $257,000?
So right now, the overall increase for the Selectmen's budget is $257,007. Of that 257, you can see on the screen, 150,299 is the increase over the current fiscal year in capital expenses coming from the CIP program. And and I will say, while that is a lot, we did not do a lot of capital, necessary capital projects, including some purchases of vehicles in this current fiscal year because of the unknown COVID impact. Right? In the spring, we just weren't sure. So we, as a board, cut some of those things out before we moved it forward to the Board of Finance. So we're seeing a little bit of an increase this year to try to get us back to where we should be at the very least. So although it is a significant increase at 7%, 257,000 of that of the 257, 150 of it is in capital expenditures. The rest is made up of the departments and our budget. John, you wanted to say something?
Oh, so the if we don't count the capital expenditures, do we have a percentage? What the increase would be just in a Selectmen's budget less the capital expenditures?
Yes. So Erica, if you want to take out the total capital, you are going to be taking out $100,235.
100,235?
Yes, that's the total of the lawsuit. Yep. So so some of that $150,000 that's in 930 is offset by a decrease in 504 and 910. So.
So I put something in here and it will show?
Sure, sure. I would online.
On E?
Yep, I would type in credit 100,235.
So John, if if we weren't looking at the capital portion of our budget and we can't completely ignore it because it is part of our overall budget, we'd be looking at a 4% in 4.4% increase and 156,000. And again, this includes one laborer. And the benefits, Donna, correct me if I'm wrong, the benefits we assumed were employee plus family?
Family.
A family. Okay. So that's, you know, the the largest amount. Depending on who's hired, you could end up with a waiver. You could end up with just an employee and E plus one. So there could be some savings there.
Well, you have to, I mean, you have to.
We have to budget, right? We don't, we don't know.
Have to budget for the worst case scenario on that. You can you can go with a 4% is going to be a lot better than trying to go in with a 10% or whatever. Just.
So we're going to offset the dollars represented, that $100,000, right? If we go in with that 4%, then from the rest of our budget, we'd need to cut another $100,000. Now, is the right thing to do to, you know, chip away at our departments $100,000 so that we can maintain the capital expenses needed to adequately function? I'm not, I'm not sure that's the right thing to do either.
I'm not sure. We can go, we can go in. I'm feeling a little bit better than with this than what we were showing last week. But I'm also thinking, I was reading the minutes for the Board of Finance meetings today and everybody is wants it all and they want it now. We have at least two other units which are not the Board of Selectmen that they want huge, huge increases in their budgets. So it's going to be a tough thing to fight.
It's going to be, but I think we, what we need to be looking at is what we need to adequately, you know, run the functions of the town that this board is responsible for. And that's, you know, the bulk of the main government here in Wellington. And our Public Works takes up a large, a large chunk of that. I do want to point out, and I want to look here and if Donna can. All right, we represent some of that. So in the Public Works budget, if we're looking at the Public Works budget independently, as we did initially in saw Troy's large increase, part of the capital expenses are represented in that budget as well. So while he had a large increase, some of that is debt repayment for Public Works vehicles. Okay, so you know, I want you to keep that in in mind that in this budget has not, Troy and I, you know, looked at some of these numbers. While it seems like a large increase in Public Works, that budget over a seven-year period has only gone up $100,000 and 30% of that was salary. So we have not invested back into a department that's constantly in repair, whether it's repairing roads, repairing in our vehicles, maintaining our structures, maintaining all of our facilities in seven years, $70,000. Not a lot of funds. So this is a big hit. We did for dollar purposes. If you want to see what, not counting the laborers, Donna had already taken those out. The additional changes that Troy and I met with and cut out of that budget last week were $168,265. So again, I think reluctantly Troy is agreeing to some of those changes. I think he holds steadfast, let him speak for himself if he so chooses, that these are the, you know, those increases are what he feels are necessary for us to have forward progress with maintaining our facilities and our roads specifically. Some of our roads are in pretty rough shape. Troy?
I believe we just on there's three line items that everything else is staying at a zero. And the three line items is the vehicle maintenance went up, the tree went up, and the salt. Those are the only three that make up, that make up, that we raised. Other than that, everything else stayed pretty much the same.
Yeah, vehicle maintenance. We did go up $10,000 in that. And then the trees, we didn't touch the tree money. John, you asked Troy last time if we really had that many trees that needed to come down and he feels very strongly about the potential risk and liability if we don't remove more of those trees. So we did not make a cut there where it went from $25,000 to $50,000.
Yeah, so remembering, I'm really kind of scared of what's going to happen with the with the economy this year. Just personal, I went yesterday to get some grain for my chickens, which I do every two weeks. And in the space of two weeks, the price went up for my total order went up $17,000. And that's a lot for a two-week. And we also had, I looked it up, the average price of gas in Connecticut since January 20th has gone up 17 cents a gallon. I don't know if anybody knows, but the truck stop, the restaurant at the truck stop up here is closed. The TA, so that's not not helping the local economy any. And I don't know, I probably would go with this and see what happens with the current increase, the $257,000 increase. I'll go along with that.
And and I will point out, CIP has not finalized the plan year one or years two through five, the out years. So there could be some fluctuation in that. And then we will, you know, have to take a look at that plan and, you know, give it our stamp of approval. There, an advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen, and we will have the overall say in that plan. And so I hope for that to come to us. We'll either have to hold a special meeting next week or at our March 1st meeting because our budget is due to the Board of Finance on Thursday, March 4th. Based on our conversations, I believe year one is solid and done. But until there's any kind of movement and vote, and we could not do that last week, we didn't have a quorum. Then I won't feel confident that we're at least looking at a set number. I feel pretty good about it, but it's not set in stone from that committee. And then for us to take a look at. Liza?
Am I there? Am I here? Hello? I saw a funny meme. It was like the new world of virtual conference calling is like a séance. Are you there? Can you hear me? Can anyone hear me?
You need to share that again, I will.
I think I'm in agreement with John. I mean, certainly our financial situation is a concern. I think in this fiscal year, we have a little bit of a buffer and I, you know, will implore the Board of Finance to help with the, to use the buffer that we have to help alleviate some of the financial stress that we're going to, you know, that we may be facing. Excuse me. You know, that's, you know, that's what our rainy day fund is for, is to give back into the budget when we are in these kinds of situations. And when businesses are going out and I was there just, was it Friday? And saw that the truck stop restaurant has gone out of business and that certainly wasn't an encouraging sign. But but I do think we have we have a little room right now and the Board of Finance needs to give that back into the budget because that's exactly what that money is for times like now.
Okay. So do we want to suggest or are we happy with either of these two scenarios? My guess, based on our conversation, is that we're scenario two did not include all of the cuts. It was just that initial look. It didn't show any of the additional cuts we made. But if we're content with taking a stepped increase approach and adding one full-time laborer, that's what scenario one here would represent. And again, it is a 7% increase. Or sounds better, John, it's just not real.
It's, I think that's going to be pretty high and I think you're going to have a hard time trying to sell that to the Board of Finance. We are where we are, I guess.
Do you have any more suggested areas of the budget where you think it could be cut? If you think that that's good? No? Okay, right. So, you know, we really. Okay. Any other comments, questions, work we want to see done on the budget? So if we're content with the budget at this increase, and I'll use that term loosely again, would I love to see what the Board of Finance is asking? They're asking for us to take a look and they'd like to see, you know, a budget. They didn't necessarily put an amount on it, but a budget that we could justify and justify any increases. They're requesting a zero increase, but I think we all know a zero increase is a cut. We would have to make significant cuts to get to zero. We don't know yet what our contractual issue, constraints are going to be related to staff as we plan to negotiate. We have increases in insurance. We have increases in in other contracts that we have. So our contractual obligations put us above zero. Zero is operating at a loss. And to continue to do that for a decade, asking for almost a decade in this town of zero is really, I think it's some of what's gotten us to this point. That we're finding it harder to maintain things. And I've said it before, just because you see our departments here doing something doesn't mean they're doing the best that they can. They're doing what they are able to do with the resources that they have. And our staff works really, really hard, but we don't often give them all of the resources that they need to go further. Sometimes just getting by is not enough. Do the reports that need to get to the state get done? Yes. Do the bills that need to get paid get done? Yes. Is there a lot more work? I think every department here could tell you, yes, there's more that could be done specifically in Public Works. There's no way around the fact that that is our most expensive department. It has the most staff and they do a tremendous amount of work that is not inexpensive. It is costly work to maintain this town and our roads need, we have some, we have some roads that are in great shape. I don't be all doom and gloom and Troy again, at some point, he's going to come to us with his whole plan and we're going to talk just roads at a Selectmen's meeting. But we have some roads that are in some serious need of complete repair and we're talking $100,000 each time we want to do a small stretch of these roads, correct, Troy? Significant dollars. And at some point, we're going to need to be able to do them. But if we come in at zero every year, we're never going to get ahead of the fixes that we need to do. And and that's, that's the reality of what we do and that's going to be, it's not going to be easy. But we're going to go into the Board of Finance and defend what we believe they need. They're going to look at the needs from every budget writer and determine what the town can afford. And we'll have to work within that number, but I feel that this is a solid budget for what we need. It's by no means what we want. I think there were a lot more wants that could have been added. We didn't even, we didn't even get to see a lot of wants in here. So with that, our next step would be to approve this budget and move forward. I would be reluctant to do that. It's not on the agenda for here. We'd put it on our regular agenda. I did not put it on tonight's regular meeting agenda because we do not have a solid answer from CIP. And I don't think with that, we could possibly accept our budget without that number in it. And so I suggest again, either we hold off until after they've met, hold a special meeting or do it on March 1st. And with that, if we know tomorrow night that they've already voted and, you know, we can always send forth the budget that we believe we will have, even though it hasn't been formally done, to give the Board of Finance a little bit of opportunity to look at it ahead of our March 1st meeting. Kind of give them a preview of what's to come. Do you both agree with that?
I have a meeting on, another meeting next Monday, so I'd like to go with March 1st.
Okay, yeah, I have one Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Oh, no, I may get a Wednesday free if CIP's done. Woo, what will it do? Liza?
Yeah, that March 1st makes sense. That's fine.
And again, if CIP has concluded their work and it does not change what we do, I think we can already have a budget put together of a letter put together with it and be ready. And then again, we would present that on March 4th on the Thursday. So I would encourage this board, excuse me, to be present as we defend. as we defend our potential 7% increase. All right, seeing no, oh, didn't move enough. Seeing no other business, I will move to adjourn at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Sorry, seconded by John. You got a little laugh there. All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right. So Heather, well, stop the recording of this.